Thank you Troy, good afternoon. We call this meeting to order and welcome to the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting for Tuesday, July 27th, 2021. Would you all please stand and join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Attorney Ingles, do we have certification of the agenda for today?
We do, Mr. Chair. My office has reviewed all items on today's agenda and they all meet legal approval. There was a couple typographical corrections on consent items 3A and B. Those are your minutes from previous meetings. Commissioner Layden, you had been dropped from the block at the top of the page and while you were absent, you still belong in the block of who was present and who was not. So, we have fixed that. It didn't make the online version. It was a typo and I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Great, thank you Counsel, we appreciate that. Do we have any Commissioners with any disclosures for items on this agenda?
I have none, Mr. Chair, thank you.
No, sir.
And I have none either, thank you very much. So, at this time, we will now move to item number two on our agenda for today, which is Citizen Comment and Organizational Comments. This time, anyone may address the Commissioners with any topic, unless it is a topic on the Consent or Regular Agenda. You'll be prompted to comment on those items at the appropriate time. Is there any Citizen Comment today? Yes, sir. Please approach the podium and if you want to state your name and address for the record, sure.
My name is James Horine, I also go by Mike. 8865 Monwood Way, Parker, Colorado, 80134. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I do have a handout for each one of you. If it would be all right for me to approach you and hand it to you, is that okay?
Certainly, sir. And if you want to give that to our Counsel, he will just review that and then circulate that for this exhibit.
Oh, I would, yes, sir. I have three here, one for each one of you.
Commissioners, I will mark it Exhibit A.
I do have some comments. I'll try to keep them brief and to the point, it shouldn't take very long. I have a prepared statement on behalf of the residents of the Cottonwood subdivision and Cottonwood Water and Sanitation District. I am here to talk about the public filing made by the Cottonwood Water and Sanitation District published in the local newspaper. The first thing I would like to start with is HB 20-1074. Changes do not apply to the Cottonwood Water and Sanitation District since they have no trash service in the existing service plan for our district. Trash service is not one of the listed services. Number two, we as residents of the Cottonwood, of Cottonwood, have not been formally polled by the district as to whether there is any desire or acceptance for the district to take on the additional duties and responsibilities of garbage collection. This would create a difficult situation for many residents and several vendors that are currently contracted to provide these services for our homes and have been for over 30 years. We would therefore request the Douglas County Board of Commissioners rule this public filing by the Cottonwood Water and Sanitation District to be a material modification of the Cottonwood Water and Sanitation District's service plan and act accordingly to enforce your ruling. As residents of Cottonwood, we want the water district to focus on provisioning of water and sewer services as expected. We don't want them diverting time, resources, and attention elsewhere, especially when these efforts may deter free enterprise and the homeowner's existing contracts with local businesses. The proposal of centralization is also to restrict what private trash enterprises they use for trash collection purposes. In 1980, the Douglas County Commissioners and Douglas County District Court approved the Cottonwood Water and Sanitation Service Plan. Page 1 states, "Cottonwood Water and Sanitation will be formed for the purpose of providing water and sewer service." On November 13th, 1974, the Douglas County Commissioners approved a master plan for Cottonwood. Page 4-6 of the plan states the following.
And sir, your time is up. I'm going to ask you to just wrap up in the next few seconds if you could.
What did he say?
So, your time is up. You had three minutes of public comment. If you could wrap up for us.
All right, well, please continue to read the notes. It's pretty self-explanatory. This is a simple decision to make and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. And please review what I've written because exactly what I'm reading right now.
Great.
Per vey, datum, all right?
We will and thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional public comment for today? Yes, sir. If you want to just approach the podium and provide your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Luis Tobar. My address is 14068 Hill Rose Drive. I work for Mulhern MRE and our company manages the Cotton Water and Sanitation District. I have some exhibits here that I would like to share with you guys, Commissioners. We, so I'm here on behalf of the water, the Cotton Water and Sanitation District. I want to, again, I appreciate your time today. I wanted to give you some background on this trash legislation. First of all, I would like to note that the Cotton Water and Sanitation District has been a residential board since 1996. As you would expect, most of the districts in Douglas County and throughout the state are developers started. But again, for the last 25 years, Cottonwood has had a residential board. And the trash legislation is a very interesting bill. This was something that the water district presented to the Metro District because by statute, they can provide the service. The water, the Metro District completed a survey. The survey essentially noted that there was some need for these trash services being done by one company for multiple reasons and you will see that in the exhibit that we shared with you guys. Long story short, the Metro District denied the moving this forward for the reasons that are explained in front of you. There is, there's quite a bit of trash companies going in and out of the district multiple times, same streets over and over, Monday through Friday. Once the Metro District denied the proposal that was presented to them by the water district, the Cotton Water and Sanitation District worked with legislator Kim Ransome, who was the prime sponsor for this bill. And the result of that bill that was passed during the 2020 regular session is in front of you, excuse me. And I'd like to close this, just to say that the residents of, there is a, there is a great value here that the water district is pursuing on behalf of the resident. Cost savings can be realized and our board recognizes the need for this community to get financial aid whenever possible. And the recent, the most recent trash collection, if it's done by one company, will be about 22, about $15 to $20 cheaper than what the residents paid today.
Mr. Tobar, your time has expired. If you could wrap up for us, please.
Commissioners, I'll be more than happy to invite you to maybe listen to one of the Cottonwood Board members. There are local leaders in their community. They understand, they understand very well the need of Cottonwood. I'm going to tell you something that you already know about Cottonwood. One of the, it's a district that struggles financially quite a bit.
And sir, I'm sorry, but you're significantly past your time. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks again.
Is there any additional Citizen Comment for today? Seeing none in the gallery, Troy, is there anybody online?
I have no online requests.
Okay, thank you very much, Troy. With that, we will move on from Citizen Comment and Organization Comments to our Consent Agenda.
And Commissioners, before you do that, the second exhibit you were tendered has been labeled Exhibit B. That is two documents, a summary document and then a copy of the bill that both gentlemen were talking about.
Thank you, Attorney Ingles.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve the requests in all items A through Y of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
I've got a first and second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes. We will now move from our Consent Agenda to, and I'm sorry, was there, yeah, I'm sorry. Attorney Ingles, did we need to have any public comment on our Consent Agenda?
Typically, you would ask if there's anyone that wants to poll anything or discuss anything on the Consent Agenda, but it is rare that anyone takes you up on that offer.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Ingles. With that, we will move on to our Regular Agenda. And the first item is Item 4A, the Budget Reallocation from Business Unit 800269. And it looks like we have Sean Owens presenting from staff. Sean?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Sean Owens for Public Works Engineering. The item before you today is actually two items in one agenda item. And it's for the Waterton Phase 2 project, which is, if you can see on the map on the board, the blue portion was Waterton Extension Phase 1, what we called the Southern Connector, which was opened last August. And then the red portion is Waterton Extension Phase 2, which takes Waterton Road from Moore Road across to Rampart Range Road, with a portion of that road already being under construction by Sterling Ranch. The first item on the agenda is Budget Reallocation from Business Unit 80260 to Business Unit 80267. 80260 is I-25 County Line Road out at I-25 in Inverness, a project that's been delayed with right away in permitting that will, the funds, once we collect them from Sterling Ranch, will go back into that account. And then the second item is a construction contract for Hudeck Civil. We bid this project in June, open bids in July, put it on the street in June, open bids in July, received seven bids. Hudeck was our low bidder, most responsive. So, we're awarding, asking to approve a construction contract with Hudeck Civil in the amount of $14,639,421. I would like to note, the engineer's estimate was close to $17 million on that one. So, we got, we got really good bids. Other than that, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you very much, Sean. Questions for Sean?
Sean, you have been very excited about getting this road finished, getting the first part done, the blue part on this drawing. You were giddy over, so I'm sure you're going to be really looking forward to getting the rest of this done. And thank you for the work you do. I gotta tell you, Sunday night, when I went through this whole packet, I was amazed at how much work Janet and her staff did in this packet. You guys have been working your tails off down there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
Thank you, Chair. Sean, in terms of the monetary transfer, that looks, that looks fully appropriate for me. I do want to take the opportunity, though, to ask about the intersection of Waterton Road here and Rampart Range Road. I've, I'm sure I'm not alone among our Commissioners and hearing from some members of the public in terms of the disruption at a, in the vicinity of that intersection with Rampart Range Road. Sean, can you give us a status update on what that, what that looks like in terms of, are we getting through that, that time of disruption with the lanes being closed down? Have we been able to get the infrastructure work done on that intersection to get that opened up?
The only thing that is missing is the overlay at the intersection. So, I drove through there this morning and there's two lanes open northbound that merge into one lane north of the intersection, just like it always has. And the only thing missing in that area is the overlay through the intersection, which is always interesting to do under traffic. So, I would imagine they might be waiting for a night work when the weather's right and the pavement plant's open to get that done. But it's very close to being done now.
Okay, well, you know, thank you all for doing the work to get the financing right so that we could proceed, getting the contracts awarded so we could proceed. And of course, any updates we can receive on the many residents that I assure you are very interested in what's going on at that intersection would be greatly appreciated.
The intersection project, just to note, is not a county project, but is actually being done by Sterling Ranch. So, we're, we have inspectors on it, but they've really, anytime you work in an existing intersection of that, that size, the existing utilities, I think they've moved a couple utilities twice in there because they moved it in the wrong place the first time, which we run into when we work at intersections, big intersections like that, that are existing. So, I don't, I don't envy them for the amount of work they've had to do in that intersection, but driving through it this morning, it looks really close to being done.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Those are my questions, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. I have no questions, Sean, but just a huge note of gratitude to you and all of the engineering staff on the incredible work here, both with the private sector partners, our citizens in the county to accomplish this important thoroughfare. We know that traffic solutions are of critical importance to citizens in this area, as are opportunities to evacuate in the event of a unforeseen fire. So, we certainly appreciate the hard work and thank you for all you do.
The one interesting thing to note is that a secondary access all the way across this valley into Roxborough has been on our transportation plan since 1994 and is finally coming to fruition by completing this project.
We're seeing the excitement in your eyes and we share that, Sean.
And Commissioners, I'm sorry, I have one question. Sean, when you were giving the description, you said the transfer was going to be from Fund 800260.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The package says 269. I just want to make sure the record's correct. 269?
It's my engineering dyslexia. That's why you get crooked roads sometimes from me.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments or questions for staff?
I have none.
Okay, seeing none. Let's go ahead and move into public comment on this particular item. Is there any public comment on this Regular Agenda item? Troy, do we have anybody online for this?
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. I have no online requests.
Okay. Thank you, Troy. Seeing no additional public comment, we'll bring it back to the Board for further discussion and/or a motion.
Chair, if it pleases the Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Budget Reallocation from Business Unit 800269 to Business Unit 800267 in the amount of $3,300,000 in construction contract with Hudeck Excavating Inc., doing business as HEI Civil, for the Waterton Road Extension Phase 2 Project, Douglas County Project Number CI 2020-025 in the amount of $14,639,421.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes. Thank you very much, Sean. With that, we will move on to Item 4B regarding a contract between BNSF, Colorado Department of Transportation, and the Board of County Commissioners. Sean Owens presenting for staff.
Good afternoon again, Commissioner Sean Owens for Public Works Engineering. Finally, before you, we have a contract to sign between the BNSF Railroad Company and CDOT and Douglas County. And this is for our Toma Road West, West I-25 Frontage Road signal that we actually constructed last, and was completed last October. We've been waiting on this contract for over a year. We started the negotiations on this contract back in April of 2020, after we got approval from the PUC to add a signal at, at the intersection and connect it to the crossing at, on Toma, just west of the frontage road, so that they, the signal would be interconnected with the crossings. This, this is, this is on railroad schedule. So, our latest thing was a threat to, to file a complaint with the PUC and all of a sudden, the contract showed up in the email three days later. And so, first step is for the county to sign it. And what this does is the county is committing to spend, pay the railroad their estimated construction cost for some upgrades to the crossing, the existing crossing, so that we can tie our signal into it. The contract amount is $243,650 that will be paid to the BN once they complete their work. I just want to say that they've given us an estimated timeframe of a minimum of six months before they get their work done and then we can have our contractor tie the signal in and turn it on. So, slowly but surely, we're pushing that rock up the hill and I'm hoping this, this will get us a long way.
Great, thank you, Sean. Any questions or comments for staff?
I think what the consistency of your message is that government works slowly.
BN's not government anymore. They're a private company.
There you go, good point.
I wouldn't blame, I wouldn't blame it on that.
Thank you. I know that you've worked really hard. We had some serious accidents on that frontage road when the construction for the gap started. So, it's, I hope we get this project done before the gap is done. How's that?
When are they scheduled to be done?
The end of the year?
Oh, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Sean, I mean, my experience in municipal office taught me that railroads do not work rapidly. They, they definitely have their own timeline. And so, thank goodness, thank you for taking the actions that resulted in this contract landing. I myself have actually witnessed a accident at that intersection and I don't live in that vicinity. I may be there once a month and I've witnessed an accident and much needed. I'm glad we're doing the work we need to do. I'm glad we're pushing this through. Once again, please, please do try to keep us updated on any activity and any, any progress to get this completed and make that intersection a whole lot safer than it is right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. And I have no additional comments for staff. With that, I will open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Troy, do we have any public comment online?
No online requests, sir.
Okay, seeing no public comment in the room or online, I will return it back to the Board for further discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Chair, if the Board is okay with this, I have a motion to approve a contract between BNSF, Colorado Department of Transportation, and the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County for the Toma Road West I-25 Frontage Road Phase 2 Traffic Signal Project in the amount of $243,650. Douglas County Project CI 2017-017.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion is approved. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you. So, moving on to Agenda Item 4C, a construction contract with HEI Civil for Happy Canyon Emergency Access Project. And sir, if you could just state your name and address for the record?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Neil Sarno, CIP Engineering Staff. I am here to present the agenda item for award of a construction contract with HEI Civil for Happy Canyon Emergency Access Project, Douglas County Project Number CI 2021-036. The county intends to construct a gated emergency egress that would connect Happy Canyon subdivision to Silver Heights subdivision via an egress road across several properties known as the Happy Canyon Emergency Access Project. The project extends from Home Street on the south in Silver Heights subdivision to North Canyon Lane to the north in Happy Canyon subdivision. And the project is approximately .7 miles in length. The proposed gated emergency access will be a gravel road of a width of 22 feet and require substantial grading, drainage, and sediment control features. The roadway width meets the minimum width required by the fire departments that will need to utilize this emergency access. On May 24, 2021, Douglas County Public Works Engineering solicited bids for the Happy Canyon Emergency Access Project. One bid for the above-mentioned project was delivered to the second floor, was opened and read on Tuesday, June 15, 2021 at 2:00 p.m. The contractor there, their bid was $839,000. That was HEI Civil, the original bid. After a mandatory and extensive due diligence investigation by engineering staff, it was determined that HEI Civil submitted the lowest, most responsive, and most responsible bid and that they will best serve the interests of the county for this project. I'd like to add here, since HEI Civil's original bid price was significantly, significantly more than the county budgeted or anticipated for this project, following the bid opening, engineering staff met with HEI Civil to negotiate a new contract amount to reflect the reduced scope of work and fee associated with eliminating the no-work area identified in the original bid documents. The no-work area was a portion of the access road plans that is currently being graded to accommodate a developer presently building additional assisted senior living slash care facility. Engineering staff was able to reach an agreement with HEI Civil and recommends approval of a construction contract to HEI Civil for an amount not to exceed $750,290,000 and zero cents. And funding for this construction contract are set aside from $450,000, $290 from Fund 200 in Business Unit 80513 and $300,000 from Fund 230 Business Unit 80314. Our recommended action is approval of a construction contract to HEI Civil for the amount identified as $750,000, $290. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions the Board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Sarnos. Any questions for Mr. Sarnos?
So, Mr. Sarno, Neil, thank you for, how long have you worked for the county?
It's been 17 years.
Good, thank you for your expertise here. So, in all this reading I did for this week, it seems like the big projects came in at a lower rate than what was expected, but the little projects like this one came in at a higher rate. Is that correct?
This one did from the anticipated engineer, from the engineer's estimate. That is correct, yes.
So, I appreciate that you and Janet and whoever organized a meeting to get this really important road. So, this, this is a road that the residents in Happy Canyon have been clamoring for. Art's shaking his head. He's been working with these, with this group of people and I think the developers are promenade, trying to get the road access and to get this done. This has been a long process to get here, but it's a really important one because if there is a fire in Happy Canyon, the neighbors in that area need another route to get out. So, that's why this is so important. I appreciate all the work you've done to get this done. And I also think it's interesting that we have different funds that we're taking the money from because I think the county kind of scrolls money away every year. And so, then when it comes time for a project, you look at different funds, how to fund this. So, I appreciate the work in getting this done. When do you think this project will be completed?
It's a 100-calender-day project and our notice to proceed is looking to happen here within the next week or two. So, we're looking to have this done, I want to say by, you know, three or four months.
Good, thank you very much for getting us there. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Neil, kind of a couple different questions. And mostly, I know it's in the packet, but I want to make sure that it's captured in the verbal record for any residents who may want to review it. But I too remember this coming up from my days in municipal office. So, this is an emergency egress route by design?
Correct.
Is, and so, it's not meant to be a commercial connector? It's not meant to be a residential connector route or a thoroughfare in any way?
That is correct. From my understanding and from all of the information that has been presented to me, that is absolutely, it is only be solely for the emergency access. And this is a usage. And this is something that was brought to our attention very early on, to county staff, from people within the community as well, as to the intent of this road as well.
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, me too.
We've met multiple times with Happy Canyon HOA and so forth and they've, they've provided feedback to us and absolutely that was one of their concerns.
So, the terrain is very challenging in this area and so, when we talk about the actual roadwork, the intent is this is going to be an unpaved road? Are there any sections that are going to be paved to facilitate drainage? Any sort of road capability?
Not at this time. At this time, it's just going to be a 20-foot, 22-foot wide gravel road is what it will be in terms of that. So, not HMA, no asphalt paving, so.
In terms of the roadbed construction, we are going to see some digging there in order to facilitate drainage, but then the intent- to facilitate drainage, but then the intent would be to fill, as you just said, with gravel in order to maintain as an emergency access egress road.
Yes, exactly. There'll be subgrade preparation as well, too, and so that will be part of it, but then ultimately, there's be six inches of that ABC, which is aggregate base course gravel road that will be placed on top of it.
Okay, thank you, Neil, for answering those questions, but again, very important to capture that, at least in the verbal record today, based upon, I believe, the feedback you've received and definitely the feedback in the intention planning that I've received from the residents. So thank you very much for answering my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Mr. Sarno. I have no additional questions for you, but also just a note of gratitude. We know the emergency access is so critical for our citizens, so thank you for working hard on that. With that, I will open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment on this item? Troy, do we have anybody online?
No online requests, sir.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with no public comment, I will bring this item back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Chair, if it pleases the board, I'd really like to make a motion to approve a construction contract with HEI Civil for Happy Canyon Emergency Access Project, Douglas County Project Number CI 2021. Sorry, dash zero three four.
I think it's.
Try those last three numbers again.
I had is dash zero three, zero three six. Thank you, Commissioner.
And I'll second that motion.
I'm in the same boat. Every year, it's like the i's get worse, right? Thank you very much. I've got a first and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes. Thank you very much, Neil. And with that, we'll move to Item 4D, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Lone Tree and the Board of County Commissioners. And I see Art Griffith presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Art Griffith for Engineering Staff. Before you today is a request to do an intergovernmental agreement with Lone Tree concerning Safer Main Street Project. This particular project connects the C-470 Trail with the Park Meadows Light Rail Station. It's something that I've been working with Park Meadows representatives that have been in support of this project for a long time. There was finally an opportunity to pursue improvements, safety-related improvements through the Safer Main Street Program. The project was successful in receiving 1.6 million from CDOT for the project. The project is significantly built on Park Meadows property, but it does start in CDOT right of way. The county's contributing $300,000. That money can be used for both design and construction. Lone Tree asked that we front the design money, so the bulk of our contribution will be towards the design phase. It should get started later on this year, and our total contribution is for about 14%. So it's a good leveraging project, good return on our investment. Any questions related to the project or this IGA?
Any questions for Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Art, on this project. You know, it's always kind of like art to watch you making these. I didn't mean to make a joke out of your first name, but it's always kind of like beauty to watch you as you talk about these projects because you love them and know them so much that there's just so much positive energy with it. So thank you for bringing this to us. So when I read this, I wrote the notes that Douglas County is putting in 300,000 right now and Lone Tree is putting in 200,000 right now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just bring that up because sometimes we hear that maybe Lone Tree doesn't feel the love that we are giving them, so we are putting more in their project than they are. Is that correct?
That's true.
Okay, thank you. I have no other comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
Thank you, Chair. Art, yet another ball moved another 10 yards, huh? You know, I think we mentioned, obviously, this partnership with Lone Tree, but I think we need to give some credit to Councilmember John Dyack out in Parker. When he was the chairman of the Denver Regional Council of Governments, obviously, he wasn't just representing Parker, not just representing Douglas County, but really trying to represent the entire Denver metro area when working with CDOT on landing the Safer Main Street projects for us. And there was there was a little bit of in and out with CDOT on that, on what priorities they had versus what were local. So I think I don't have a lot of questions. I'm pretty familiar with this project, but I do want to give a shout out to Councilmember John Dyack of Parker for the real great yeoman's work he did about a year, year and a half ago now, Art?
Last November, December.
Last November, yeah.
Just expand on it. You're exactly right. Councilman Dyack did a great job in getting Dr. Cog and CDOT to allocate the majority of the $77 million. They had cut off the projects at around 49 million, and they left 10 million, 20 million laying around essentially, and there was a second call for projects called 1.5. And this project actually was selected in the first round, but we scored as well as Parker did and other municipalities really well because of that effort that John did.
So congratulations, Councilmember Dyack, if you are listening, but and of course, Art, I know that you did a great deal of work on that one. So congratulations. Thanks for representing the county very well.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal, and I hope Councilman Dyack is actively listening with his ear attuned to this hearing, but in case he's not, I think my fellow commissioners make fantastic comments, which is the heroic and longtime work of our partners throughout Douglas County that oftentimes takes many years and comes to fruition with excitement, but it's good to acknowledge the time and effort that went into it. It's also important to acknowledge the ongoing partnership that the county has with municipalities like Lone Tree to ensure that everybody is contributing fairly and well. So with that, I will open it up for any public comment on this particular item. Troy, do we have anybody online for this?
I have no online requests.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with no public comment, I will return this item back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have no other discussion, but I have a motion if you're ready for one, Chair.
I am, thank you.
I have a chair, I'm sorry. I have a motion to approve a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Lone Tree and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, regarding a financial contribution for the C-470 Trail Connector to RTD Park Meadows LRT Project, associated with Douglas County Project Number CI 2021-035.
And I am happy to second.
I have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. And with that, we will move to regular Agenda Item E, a resolution approving an IGA between the Town of Parker and the Board of County Commissioners. And Art is presenting for us.
This is another project that is funded largely by opportunities through the Dr. Cog TIP process, the Transportation Improvement Program, and it was selected through the sub-regional, a high-priority project. A lot of support for this project from a number of jurisdictions. The project focuses on improving Parker Road or State Highway 83 from Lincoln Avenue to Pine Lane. Largely, the project will improve auxiliary lanes to help reduce congestion, improve safety, and add sidewalks and other improvements in that stretch of road there. The county has agreed to contribute a lump sum amount of $500,000 for this project. The project is estimated to cost $4 million. Parker was, through the Dr. Cog process, able to secure a grant of 1.4 million of federal funds for congestion mitigation and air quality improvements. CDOT is contributing 1.1 million. Very collaborative process went on in submitting that project. The county's contribution represents about 12.5%. And the recommendation is to enter into an intergovernmental agreement to advance this project.
Thank you, Art. Any questions for Art?
I don't have any questions, just to comment that this is another great project. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
Yeah, no real, no real questions. Once again, this is a project I have some familiarity with, based upon it coming before the Dr. Cog Subregional Council here in Douglas County, made up of the Douglas County delegation. You know, this isn't one of the super-big projects that we sometimes wrestle with down at the Denver Regional Council of Governments, but it is very emblematic of, well, quite frankly, what Commissioner Thomas just said of this is kind of the grunt work that the members of the Douglas County delegation do, the very emblematic of the grunt work that Art does on our behalf, working at the regional level. And so it's good to, once again, to see another ball move another 10 yards on transportation projects here in Douglas County.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal, and I will echo my fellow board members' sentiments on that level. With that, I will ask for any public comment, either in the room or online. Troy, do we have any online comments?
And no online requests, sir.
Okay, thank you, Troy. And with that, I will bring this item back for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Chair, if it pleases the board, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Parker and Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, regarding cost sharing for Parker Road Operational Improvement Project, Douglas County Project Number CI 2020-026.
Second.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that item is approved. Thank you, Art.
Thank you.
And with that, we will move to Item 4F, which is the State Historical Fund Grant Application for Douglas County Rock Shelter Excavation Project.
I'm Brittany Castle with Planning Resources. This is a request to apply for a state historic fund grant for an excavation project on a Douglas County rock shelter. Staff is requesting approval to apply for a state historical fund grant for approximately $89,000 for excavation of a Douglas County rock shelter. The required cash match from county is approximately $30,000. These funds are projected to be in the 2022 budget, resulting in a project total of an estimated $119,000. The rock shelter is located in Douglas County and is considered a protected archaeological site. As a result of Colorado law, to protect archaeological sites, the location of the rock shelter will be added to the grant application as part of the technical corrections prior to formal submission to the state. Whoa.
Wow. Really fast.
What did I do? I think I hit a button. I think I bumped the keyboard. In 2017, the land that includes the rock shelter was acquired by Douglas County Board of Commissioners. In 2019, Douglas County contracted with Cultural Resource Management Company to complete a site survey of the property prior to any development to ensure cultural resources remain protected. In late 2020, the Cultural Resource Management Company completed evaluative testing at the rock shelter. The test excavation demonstrated that significant buried cultural deposits are present. The significance of these deposits, coupled with encroaching residential developments, spurred staff to pursue a state historic fund grant to assist with the recovery of the most vulnerable deposits before they are impacted by members of the public. This grant will implement the recommendations from the test excavation report and will support extraction of intact cultural deposits vulnerable to disturbance. The proposed project will be completed in three phases designed to allow for excavation modifications as potential deposits are exposed. The rock shelter is a significant site and potential county landmark because of its cultural resources contribution to Colorado, Douglas County prehistory, and the archaeological It's staff recommendation that the grant application for the Douglas County Rock Shelter excavation in the amount of $88,650 with the county contribution of $29,550 be approved for submission by the Board of County Commissioners as it complies with county approval standards and policies. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany, for the presentation. Any questions for Brittany?
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
Hey, Brittany, so can you give us an idea? You mentioned that there were cultural artifacts that were found in this very brief survey. Can you give us an idea? I mean, was it like one or two arrowheads or something like that, or?
So far, no diagnostics, which what projectile point is a diagnostic that would give us more exact dates. What has given us dates right now is charcoal testing they've done. It was between 600 to 700 artifacts, smaller artifacts, non-diagnostic that have been found so far.
So to make a really bad pun, there's smoke, but we don't know where the what the real fire may be in terms of what may actually be deposited there.
Right.
Okay, outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. And Brittany, thank you. I don't have any additional questions, but just wanted to acknowledge your hard work and certainly, again, the partnership on funding to ensure that our one of our core priorities around natural resources and preserving our history are continued forward. With that, I will open it up for any public comment in the room or online. Is there any public comment in the room or online for this item? Troy?
I have no comments online, sir.
Okay, thank you, Troy. With no public comment, I'll bring this item back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve the state historical fund grant application for Douglas County Rock Shelter Excavation Project in the amount of $88,650 and a county contribution of $29,550.
Second, I wish to speak in favor of the motion.
Please.
So this is pretty significant for me. I mean, I think we think a lot of the historical legacy that we have here in Douglas County, being in that urban rural interface here in the Denver region, we do think a lot about historic preservation of buildings, sites from the time of our state's founding, the time of some of our municipalities incorporating, not in the last century, but in the century before. This is pretty significant, and this is very exciting to me that we're engaging this process, partnering with the state historical, you know, fund in order to really pursue this and really check it out because I don't know about anybody else, but when I was a kid in Greeley, it was nothing to go for a hike along the plat, and we would find arrowheads. We would find spear points, and we'd put them in our pockets and we'd take them home. And I got to confess, I don't even know where those items are anymore. I'm sure they're in a shoebox that my mom saved or something before her passing. To be able to do this excavation, find these items that may or may not be there, but preserve them for for all of us, not just the one or two kids that might find this shelter walking out of their backyard someday, I think is really valuable. It's well worth the $29,000, so I heartily speak in favor of the motion.
Thank you very much for that, Commissioner Teal. Any additional discussion on this motion?
None.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes. Thank you very much, Brittany. And with that, we will move to our final item on the regular agenda for today, which is Item 4G, a resolution appointing directors to the Boards of Directors of the Dawson Ridge Metropolitan District. And we have Megan Taggart presenting for staff.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. Megan Taggart with the County Attorney's Office. The county has received a request from the Dawson Ridge Metropolitan District Numbers 1 through 5 for the Board of County Commissioners to appoint directors to the district's Board of Directors pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute, Section 32-1, 905, subsection 2.5. The district's Board of Directors are presently entirely vacant. The Board of County Commissioners may appoint directors from a pool of duly qualified, willing candidates if there are no duly elected directors, and if the failure to appoint new boards will result in the interruption of services that are being provided by the districts. If appointed, the district's boards will call for nominations for an election to be held by each district within six months after their appointment, which elects
Aye.[293.06-295.23][S03] Aye, and that motion passes.[295.26-296.13][S03] Thank you very much, Neil.[297.19-301.17][S03] And with that, we'll move to Item 4D, a resolution approving an intergovernmental[301.20-304.17][S03] agreement between the City of Lone Tree and the Board of County Commissioners.[305.04-307.77][S03] And I see Art Griffith presenting for staff.[307.80-311.20][S06] Good afternoon, Art Griffith for engineering staff.[311.23-317.10][S06] Before you today is a request to do an intergovernmental agreement with Lone Tree[317.13-320.27][S06] concerning Safer Main Street Project.[320.30-328.31][S06] This particular project connects the C-470 Trail with the Park Meadows Light Rail Station.[328.34-334.61][S06] It's something that I've been working with Park Meadows representatives.[334.64-338.06][S06] Been in support of this project for a long time.[338.09-347.38][S06] There was finally an opportunity to pursue improvements, safety-related improvements[347.41-350.25][S06] through the Safer Main Street program.[350.28-358.72][S06] The project was successful in receiving 1.6 million from CDOT for the project.[358.75-363.66][S06] The project is significantly built on Park Meadows property, but it does start[363.69-368.13][S06] in CDOT right of way.[368.16-371.67][S06] The county's contributing $300,000.[371.70-375.24][S06] That money can be used for both design and construction.[375.27-379.31][S06] Lone Tree asked that we front the design money.[379.34-383.68][S06] So, the bulk of our contribution will be towards the design phase.[383.71-386.85][S06] It should get started later on this year.[386.88-392.02][S06] And our total contribution is for about 14%.[392.05-396.15][S06] So, it's a good leveraging project, good return on our investment.[396.18-399.85][S06] Any questions related to the project or this IGA?[399.88-401.52][S03] Any questions for Mr. Griffith?[403.79-405.12][S01] Thank you, Art, on this project.[405.15-409.96][S01] You know, it's, it's always kind of like art to watch you making these.[409.99-412.56][S01] I didn't mean to make a joke out of your first name.[412.59-418.00][S01] But it's always kind of like beauty to watch you as you talk about these projects,[418.03-422.45][S01] because you love them and know them so much, that there's just so much positive energy[422.48-423.68][S01] with it.[423.71-425.38][S01] So, thank you for bringing this to us.[425.41-429.68][S01] So, when I read this, I wrote the notes that Douglas County is putting in 300,000[429.71-432.31][S01] right now, and Lone Tree is putting in 200,000 right now.[432.34-432.81][S01] Is that correct?[432.84-433.48][S02] That's correct.[434.21-436.48][S01] Okay, I just bring that up because sometimes we hear[436.51-439.25][S01] that maybe Lone Tree doesn't feel the love that we are giving them.[439.28-441.35][S01] So, we are putting more in their project than they are.[441.38-442.12][S01] Is that correct?[442.62-443.35][S02] That's true.[443.38-444.15][S01] Okay, thank you.[444.18-445.12][S01] I have no other comments.[445.48-446.62][S03] Thank you, Commissioner Thomas.[446.65-447.35][S03] Commissioner Teal?[447.88-448.55][S04] Thank you, Chair.[449.95-453.52][S04] Art, yet another ball moved another 10 yards, huh?[454.78-459.12][S04] You know, I think we mentioned, obviously, this partnership with Lone Tree.[459.15-464.62][S04] But I think we need to give some credit to Councilmember John Dyack out in Parker.[464.65-468.75][S04] When he was the chairman of the Denver Regional Council of Governments, obviously,[468.78-473.81][S04] he wasn't just representing Parker, not just representing Douglas County, but really[473.84-480.48][S04] trying to represent the entire Denver metro area when working with CDOT on landing[480.51-485.18][S04] the Safer Main Street projects for us.[485.21-491.02][S04] And there was, there was a little bit of in and out with CDOT on that, on what priorities[491.05-492.88][S04] they had versus what were local.[492.91-495.95][S04] So, I think, I don't have a lot of questions.[495.98-497.91][S04] I'm pretty familiar with this project.[497.94-502.28][S04] But I do want to give a shout out to Councilmember John Dyack of Parker for the real great[502.31-509.62][S04] yeoman's work he did about a, about a year, year and a half ago now, Art?[509.65-512.28][S06] Last, last November, December.[512.31-513.15][S04] Last November, yeah.[513.18-515.95][S06] Just expand on it, you're exactly right.[515.98-524.15][S06] Councilman Dyack did a great job in getting Dr. Cog and CDOT to allocate the majority[524.18-526.35][S06] of the $77 million.[526.38-533.08][S06] They had cut off the projects at around 49 million, and they left 10 million, 20[533.11-536.35][S06] million laying around essentially.[536.38-541.12][S06] And there was a second call for projects called 1.5.[541.15-547.21][S06] And this project actually was selected in the first round, but we scored as well as[547.24-551.41][S06] Parker did and other municipalities really well because of that effort that John did.[552.35-558.15][S04] So, congratulations, Councilmember Dyack, if you are listening.[558.18-561.78][S04] But, and of course, Art, I know that you did a great deal of work on that one.[561.81-562.85][S04] So, congratulations.[562.88-565.52][S04] Thanks for representing the county very well.[566.65-567.88][S03] Thank you, Commissioner Teal.[567.91-573.75][S03] And I hope Councilman Dyack is actively listening with his ear attuned to this hearing.[573.78-577.35][S03] But in case he's not, I think my fellow commissioners make fantastic comments,[577.38-582.17][S03] which is the heroic and longtime work of our partners throughout Douglas County[582.20-587.41][S03] that oftentimes takes many years and comes to fruition with excitement.[587.44-590.78][S03] But it's good to acknowledge the time and effort that went into it.[590.81-594.15][S03] It's also important to acknowledge the ongoing partnership that the county has with[594.18-600.02][S03] municipalities like Lone Tree to ensure that everybody is contributing fairly and well.[600.04-605.88][S03] So, with that, I will open it up for any public comment on this particular item.[607.98-609.62][S03] Troy, do we have anybody online for this?[611.71-613.88][S05] I have no online requests.[613.91-614.78][S03] Okay, thank you, Troy.[614.81-618.38][S03] So, with no public comment, I will return this item back to the board for any further[618.41-619.88][S03] discussion and/or a motion.[622.15-623.17][S01] I have no other discussion, but I have a motion,[623.20-625.21][S01] if you're ready for one, Chair.[625.24-625.65][S03] I am, thank you.[626.52-627.28][S01] I have a chair.[627.31-627.85][S01] I'm sorry.[627.88-632.08][S01] I have a motion to approve a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement[632.11-636.35][S01] between the City of Lone Tree and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of[636.38-643.31][S01] Douglas, State of Colorado regarding a financial contribution for the C-470 Trail Connector[643.34-654.91][S01] to RTD Park Meadows LRT Project associated with Douglas County Project Number CI 2021-035.[656.31-657.48][S04] And I am happy to second.[658.15-659.21][S03] I have a first and a second.[659.24-661.98][S03] Is there any further discussion on this item?[662.01-664.52][S03] Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.[664.55-664.91][S01] Aye.[664.94-666.35][S03] Aye, and that motion passes.[666.38-667.88][S03] Thank you, Mr. Griffith.[667.91-672.48][S03] And with that, we will move to regular agenda item E, a resolution approving an IGA between[672.51-676.21][S03] the Town of Parker and the Board of County Commissioners.[676.24-678.35][S03] And Art is presenting for us.[678.38-687.21][S06] This is another project that is funded largely by opportunities through[687.24-692.38][S06] the Dr. Cog tip process, the Transportation Improvement Program.[692.41-699.75][S06] And it was selected through the sub-regional, a high-priority project.[699.78-704.31][S06] A lot of support for this project from a number of jurisdictions.[704.34-711.98][S06] The project focuses on improving Parker Road or State Highway 83 from Lincoln Avenue[712.01-715.52][S06] to Pine Lane.[715.55-721.28][S06] Largely, the project will improve auxiliary lanes to help reduce congestion, improve[721.31-729.81][S06] safety, and add sidewalks and other improvements in that stretch of road there.[729.84-738.98][S06] The county has agreed to contribute a lump sum amount of $500,000 for this project.[739.01-744.85][S06] The project is estimated to cost 4 million.[744.88-754.88][S06] Parker was, through the Dr. Cog process, able to secure a grant of 1.4 million of federal[754.91-759.15][S06] funds for congestion mitigation and air quality improvements.[759.18-764.65][S06] CDOT is contributing 1.1 million.[764.68-768.08][S06] Very collaborative process went on in submitting that project.[768.11-773.21][S06] The county's contribution represents about 12.5%.[773.24-780.48][S06] And the recommendation is to enter into an intergovernmental agreement to advance this[780.51-781.68][S06] project.[781.71-782.31][S03] Thank you, Art.[782.34-783.38][S03] Any questions for Art?[784.91-785.88][S01] I don't have any questions.[785.91-788.08][S01] Just to comment that this is another great project.[788.11-789.52][S01] Thank you for bringing it to us.[790.08-791.08][S03] Thank you, Commissioner Thomas.[791.11-791.81][S03] Commissioner Teal?[792.18-794.95][S04] Yeah, no real, no real questions.[794.98-799.21][S04] Once again, this is a project I have some familiarity with based upon it coming before[799.24-806.28][S04] the Dr. Cog Subregional Council here in Douglas County, made up of the Douglas County[806.31-807.48][S04] delegation.[807.51-815.41][S04] You know, this isn't one of the super-big projects that we sometimes wrestle with down[815.44-817.45][S04] at the Denver Regional Council of Governments.[817.48-821.91][S04] But it is very emblematic of, well, quite frankly, what Commissioner Thomas just said[821.94-827.88][S04] of this kind of the grunt work that the members of the Douglas County delegation do.[827.91-834.91][S04] The very emblematic of the grunt work that Art does on our behalf, working at the regional[834.94-835.01][S04] level.[835.04-842.48][S04] And so, it's good to, once again, to see another ball move another 10 yards on transportation[842.51-843.68][S04] projects here in Douglas County.[844.58-845.71][S03] Thank you, Commissioner Teal.[845.74-849.91][S03] And I will echo my fellow board member's sentiments on that level.[849.94-853.81][S03] With that, I will ask for any public comment, either in the room or online.[855.75-857.58][S03] Troy, do we have any online comments?[859.21-861.08][S05] And no online requests, sir.[861.11-862.45][S03] Okay, thank you, Troy.[862.48-866.11][S03] And with that, I will bring this item back for any further discussion and/or a motion.[866.98-868.05][S04] Chair, if it pleases the board, I'd like to make[868.08-872.58][S04] a motion to approve a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between[872.61-878.81][S04] the Town of Parker and Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado[878.84-884.21][S04] regarding cost-sharing for Parker Road Operational Improvement Project, Douglas County[884.24-888.81][S04] Project Number CI 2020-026.[888.98-889.52][S01] Second.[890.31-890.68][S03] Thank you.[890.71-891.81][S03] I have a first and a second.[891.84-894.48][S03] Is there any further discussion on this motion?[894.51-897.11][S03] Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.[897.14-897.55][S04] Aye.[897.58-899.18][S03] Aye, and that item is approved.[899.21-899.78][S03] Thank you, Art.[899.81-900.68][S02] Thank you.[900.71-905.48][S03] And with that, we will move to Item 4F, which is the state historical fund grant[905.51-909.71][S03] application for Douglas County Rock Shelter excavation project.[919.52-920.78][S07] Good afternoon, Commissioners.[920.81-922.81][S07] I'm Brittany Castle with Planning Resources.[922.84-927.41][S07] This is a request to apply for a state historic fund grant for an excavation project[927.44-930.31][S07] on a Douglas County rock shelter.[930.34-934.68][S07] Staff is requesting approval to apply for a state historical fund grant for approximately[934.71-938.91][S07] $89,000 for excavation of a Douglas County rock shelter.[938.94-943.28][S07] The required cash match from county is approximately $30,000.[943.31-947.81][S07] These funds are projected to be in the 2022 budget, resulting in a project total[947.84-953.21][S07] of an estimated $119,000.[953.24-958.01][S07] The rock shelter is located in Douglas County and is considered a protected archaeological[958.04-958.08][S07] site.[958.11-962.88][S07] As a result of Colorado law, to protect archaeological sites, the location of the rock shelter[962.91-967.21][S07] will be added to the grant application as part of the technical corrections prior to[967.24-968.21][S07] formal submission to the state.[969.05-969.52][S07] Oops.[969.55-969.98][S07] Whoa.[970.01-970.52][S01] Wow.[971.68-972.68][S01] Really fast.[973.45-975.31][S07] What did I do?[975.34-976.38][S07] I think I hit a button.[985.68-986.81][S07] I think I bumped the keyboard.[988.31-988.88][S07] There you go.[988.91-989.48][S07] Thanks.[992.35-996.21][S07] In 2017, the land that includes the rock shelter was acquired by Douglas County Board[996.24-997.65][S07] of Commissioners.[997.68-1002.01][S07] In 2019, Douglas County contracted with Cultural Resource Management Company to[1002.04-1006.58][S07] complete a site survey of the property prior to any development to ensure cultural resources[1006.61-1007.52][S07] remain protected.[1010.85-1015.01][S07] In late 2020, the Cultural Resource Management Company completed evaluative testing at[1015.04-1016.21][S07] the rock shelter.[1016.24-1021.11][S07] The test excavation demonstrated that significant buried cultural deposits are present.[1021.14-1025.21][S07] The significance of these deposits, coupled with encroaching residential development,[1025.24-1028.91][S07] spurred staff to pursue a state historic fund grant to assist with the recovery of[1028.94-1032.68][S07] the most vulnerable deposits before they are impacted by members of the public.[1036.84-1040.48][S07] This grant will implement the recommendations from the test excavation report and will[1040.51-1044.68][S07] support extraction of intact cultural deposits vulnerable to disturbance.[1044.71-1049.41][S07] The proposed project will be completed in three phases designed to allow for excavation[1049.44-1053.21][S07] modifications as potential deposits are exposed.[1053.24-1057.38][S07] The rock shelter is a significant site and potential county landmark because of its[1057.41-1061.84][S07] cultural resources contribution to Colorado, Douglas County prehistory, and the archaeological[1061.88-1064.84][S07] record.[1064.88-1068.48][S07] It's staff recommendation that the grant application for the Douglas County Rock Shelter[1068.51-1075.52][S07] excavation in the amount of $88,650 with the county contribution of $29,550 be approved[1075.55-1079.81][S07] for submission by the Board of County Commissioners as it complies with county approval standards[1079.84-1083.25][S07] and policies.[1083.28-1086.71][S07] This concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any of your questions.[1086.74-1087.21][S07] Thank you.[1087.75-1089.21][S03] Thank you, Brittany, for the presentation.[1089.24-1090.28][S03] Any questions for Brittany?[1090.84-1091.34][S01] I have none.[1091.38-1091.81][S01] Thank you.[1092.58-1093.48][S03] Thank you, Commissioner Thomas.[1093.51-1094.18][S03] Commissioner Teal?[1094.21-1094.84][S04] Hey, Brittany.[1094.88-1099.84][S04] So, can you give us an idea, you mentioned that there were cultural artifacts that[1099.88-1103.58][S04] were found in this very brief survey.[1103.61-1108.58][S04] Can you give us an idea, I mean, was it like one or two arrowheads or something like[1108.61-1108.65][S04] that, or?[1108.68-1112.95][S07] So far, no diagnostics, which, what projectile point[1112.98-1116.71][S07] is a diagnostic that would give us more exact dates.[1116.74-1121.41][S07] What has given us dates right now is charcoal testing they've done.[1121.44-1126.21][S07] It was between 600 to 700 artifacts, smaller artifacts, non-diagnostic that have been[1126.24-1127.18][S07] found so far.[1127.84-1132.41][S04] So, to make a really bad pun, there's smoke, but[1132.44-1136.68][S04] we don't know where the, what the real fire may be in terms of what may actually be deposited[1136.71-1136.84][S04] there?[1136.88-1137.48][S07] Right.[1137.51-1138.38][S04] Okay.[1138.41-1139.18][S04] Outstanding.[1139.21-1139.61][S04] Thank you.[1140.58-1141.65][S03] Thank you, Commissioner Teal.[1141.68-1142.45][S03] And Brittany, thank you.[1142.48-1145.91][S03] I don't have any additional questions, but just wanted to acknowledge your hard work[1145.94-1150.11][S03] and certainly, again, the partnership on funding to ensure that our, one of our core[1150.15-1156.15][S03] priorities around natural resources and preserving our history are continued forward.[1156.18-1159.78][S03] With that, I will open it up for any public comment in the room or online.[1159.81-1162.52][S03] Is there any public comment in the room or online for this item?[1165.91-1166.41][S03] Troy?[1168.18-1169.81][S05] I have no comments online, sir.[1170.18-1171.98][S03] Okay, thank you, Troy.[1172.01-1175.38][S03] With no public comment, I'll bring this item back to the board for any further discussion[1175.41-1176.21][S03] and/or a motion.[1179.71-1185.08][S01] Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve the state historical fund grant application[1185.11-1192.52][S01] for Douglas County Rock Shelter excavation project in the amount of $88,650[1192.55-1196.71][S01] and a county contribution of $29,550.[1197.61-1199.61][S04] Second, and wish to speak in favor of the motion.[1200.15-1200.61][S03] Please.[1201.18-1205.21][S04] So, this is pretty significant for me.[1205.24-1210.34][S04] I mean, I think we think a lot of the historical legacy that we have here in Douglas County,[1211.11-1216.08][S04] being in that urban, rural interface here in the Denver region.[1216.11-1224.11][S04] We do think a lot about historic preservation of buildings, sites from the time of our[1224.15-1229.11][S04] state's founding, the time of some of our municipalities incorporating.[1229.15-1232.71][S04] Not in the last century, but in the century before.[1232.74-1234.45][S04] This is pretty significant.[1234.48-1239.21][S04] And this is very exciting to me that we're engaging this process, partnering with[1239.24-1247.31][S04] the state historical, you know, fund in order to really pursue this and really check it[1247.34-1247.38][S04] out.[1247.41-1251.52][S04] Because I don't know about anybody else, but when I was a kid in Greeley, it was nothing[1251.55-1254.71][S04] to go for a hike along the platte, and we would find arrowheads.[1254.74-1256.78][S04] We would find spear points.[1256.81-1260.15][S04] And we'd put them in our pockets, and we'd take them home.[1260.18-1264.48][S04] And I got to confess, I don't even know where those items are anymore.[1264.51-1269.28][S04] I'm sure they're in a shoebox that my mom saved or something before her passing.[1269.31-1276.58][S04] To be able to do this excavation, find these items that may or may not be there, but preserve[1276.61-1283.34][S04] them for, for all of us, not just the one or two kids that might find this shelter[1283.38-1286.78][S04] walking out of their backyard someday, I think is really valuable.[1286.81-1290.05][S04] It's, it's well worth the $29,000.[1290.08-1292.21][S04] So, I heartily speak in favor of the motion.[1293.01-1294.88][S03] Thank you very much for that, Commissioner Teal.[1294.91-1297.01][S03] Any additional discussion on this motion?[1298.01-1298.58][S01] None.[1299.05-1300.05][S03] Thank you, Commissioner Thomas.[1300.08-1301.91][S03] All those in favor signal by saying aye.[1302.05-1302.34][S04] Aye.[1302.38-1302.71][S01] Aye.[1302.74-1304.71][S03] Aye, and that motion passes.[1304.74-1306.61][S03] Thank you very much, Brittany.[1306.65-1311.21][S03] And with that, we will move to our final item on the regular agenda for today, which[1311.24-1316.01][S03] is Item 4G, a resolution appointing directors to the Boards of Directors of the Dawson Ridge[1316.04-1318.34][S03] Metropolitan District.[1318.38-1320.31][S03] And we have Megan Taggart presenting for staff.[1321.08-1322.52][S08] Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners.[1322.55-1325.11][S08] Megan Taggart with the County Attorney's Office.[1325.15-1329.28][S08] The county has received a request from the Dawson Ridge Metropolitan District Numbers[1329.31-1335.45][S08] 1 through 5 for the Board of County Commissioners to appoint directors to the district's Board[1335.48-1344.21][S08] of Directors pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute Section 32-1, 905, subsection 2.5.[1344.24-1349.52][S08] The district's Board of Directors are presently entirely vacant.[1349.55-1354.81][S08] The Board of County Commissioners may appoint directors from a pool of duly qualified,[1354.84-1359.05][S08] willing candidates if there are no duly elected directors.[1359.08-1364.45][S08] And if the failure to appoint new boards will result in the interruption of services[1364.48-1366.91][S08] that are being provided by the districts.[1366.94-1373.61][S08] If appointed, the district's boards will call for nominations for an election to[1373.65-1379.11][S08] be held by each district within six months after their appointment, which election will[1379.15-1382.05][S08] be held on May 3, 2022.[1382.08-1386.25][S08] I am available to answer any questions that the Board might have.[1386.28-1391.91][S08] And Katie James, who is General Counsel for the districts, is also here to address any[1391.94-1393.11][S08] questions the Board may have of her.[1394.01-1395.01][S03] Thank you very much, Megan.[1395.04-1396.71][S03] Any questions for Megan?[1397.98-1398.78][S09] I have none.[1398.81-1399.48][S09] Thank you.[1399.51-1400.52][S04] No questions.[1400.55-1402.58][S03] And I have no questions either.[1402.61-1405.01][S03] With that, we will move it to public comment.[1405.04-1409.28][S03] Do we have any public comment on this item, either in person or online?[1409.31-1409.78][S03] Troy?[1411.31-1412.41][S05] None online, sir.[1412.88-1413.41][S03] Okay.[1413.44-1416.68][S03] With no public comment, we'll move it back to the board for any further discussion[1416.71-1417.52][S03] and/or a motion.[1418.58-1422.15][S04] Chair, if it pleases the board, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution[1422.18-1428.41][S04] appointing directors to the Board, Boards of Directors of the Dawson Ridge Metropolitan[1428.44-1435.01][S04] District, NOS dot one dash five.[1437.31-1437.81][S01] Second.[1438.34-1439.41][S03] I have a first and a second.[1439.44-1442.21][S03] Is there any further discussion on this motion?[1442.24-1444.81][S03] Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.[1444.84-1445.21][S04] Aye.[1445.24-1447.68][S03] Aye, and that motion passes.[1447.71-1449.45][S03] Thank you very much, Megan.[1449.48-1453.61][S03] And with that, we will move to our county manager report, Doug DeBoer.[1455.71-1456.88][S03] Okay, thank you very much.[1459.21-1466.84][S03] And moving from our county manager report, we will move to any commissioner comments[1466.88-1467.61][S03] for today.[1467.65-1468.11][S03] Commissioner Teal?[1471.28-1473.52][S04] Thank you, Chair.[1473.55-1474.01][S04] One moment, please.[1490.21-1496.08][S04] Chair, I'd like to take a moment to read what was intended to be a proclamation.[1496.11-1502.28][S04] And instead, I'd like to make it, have it received as an announcement in my commissioner[1502.31-1505.34][S04] comments.[1505.38-1511.52][S04] And this is pertaining to International Mead Day.[1511.55-1518.81][S04] Now, some of you may have just heard me say "mead," but I assure you, it's mead, M-E-A-D.[1518.84-1523.84][S04] And if I may, whereas mead, or honey wine, is an alcoholic beverage made from fermenting[1523.88-1528.21][S04] honey and is the oldest alcoholic beverage known by mankind, whereas mead is one of[1528.24-1534.58][S04] the most sustainable craft beverages produced today, with most commercial meateries using[1534.61-1539.25][S04] less water and power than a typical single-family home.[1539.28-1543.11][S04] Whereas mead is one of the fastest-growing craft alcoholic beverages produced in the[1543.15-1548.21][S04] United States, and whereas Colorado is home to more than 20 meateries, Douglas County[1548.24-1553.31][S04] is home to one of the fastest-growing meateries in the country.[1553.34-1557.21][S04] There are more than 450 meateries in the United States.[1557.24-1562.98][S04] And whereas Colorado apiaries enable Colorado agriculture through pollination of essential[1563.01-1570.08][S04] food crops, and Colorado meateries support Colorado apiaries by purchasing by-product[1570.11-1576.25][S04] honey, and whereas Colorado meateries are helping drive growth in the Colorado wine[1576.28-1581.61][S04] industry, and whereas Colorado is recognized as a focal point in mead, hosting the American[1581.65-1586.81][S04] Mead Makers Association Annual Conference and the Mazers Cup, the largest international[1586.84-1593.28][S04] mead competition in the United States, and whereas Colorado meads have gained national[1593.31-1597.61][S04] and international recognition for superior quality and flavor.[1597.65-1603.34][S04] And whereas mead day was first celebrated on the first Saturday of August 2002 by[1603.38-1609.01][S04] American Home Brewers Association, and swiftly grew to an international celebration in[1609.04-1612.15][S04] Europe, the Americas, and Asia.[1612.18-1617.88][S04] Whereas International Mead Day is a celebration focused on increasing awareness, history,[1617.91-1622.88][S04] education, and production of this artisanal beverage.[1622.91-1628.21][S04] Now, therefore, I am happy to announce to the people of Douglas County, Colorado,[1628.24-1632.81][S04] that Saturday, August 7, is widely recognized as mead day, and urge all citizens to celebrate[1632.84-1640.71][S04] our small-business mead makers, their artisanal products, and their positive influence on[1640.74-1643.52][S04] Douglas County and our state.[1643.55-1645.48][S04] That concludes my comments, sir.[1645.51-1646.88][S03] Thank you very much, Commissioner Teal.[1646.91-1650.31][S03] And we certainly appreciate the ongoing support that you've always provided to citizens[1650.34-1652.98][S03] and businesses in and throughout Douglas County.[1653.01-1654.81][S03] Are there any additional commissioner comments?[1655.31-1656.52][S10] Thank you, Commissioner Layden.[1656.55-1663.11][S10] I would like to highlight something that was in Mr. DeBoer's county manager report.[1663.15-1667.78][S10] Couple of years ago, we had a really sad situation in Douglas County.[1667.81-1671.61][S10] It was a murder-suicide involving a small child.[1671.65-1677.52][S10] So, as a result of that, our Human Services Department really has looked through that[1677.55-1680.31][S10] case to figure out what we might have missed.[1680.34-1684.61][S10] And because of that research, they have developed what is now called the Douglas County[1684.65-1690.71][S10] Child Abuse and Neglect Multidisciplinary Team, called the MDT.[1690.74-1696.31][S10] And what this team does is it is used to enhance the best practices and collaboration[1696.34-1703.31][S10] between child abuse professionals in Douglas County and others to benefit children and[1703.34-1704.81][S10] families we serve.[1704.84-1709.91][S10] Specifically, the key members on this team are the Douglas County Human Services Department,[1709.94-1714.71][S10] the Douglas County Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Department, the Castle Rock Police[1714.74-1719.28][S10] Department, the Lone Tree Police Department, the Parker Police Department, and the Office[1719.31-1721.71][S10] of the District Attorney.[1721.74-1727.21][S10] This team will start meeting monthly to engage in case staffing, sharing of information[1727.24-1732.11][S10] on different cases that they're working on, and to build the relationships between the[1732.15-1738.11][S10] departments so that we really don't let any more cases perhaps slip through the cracks.[1738.15-1743.98][S10] So, I just want anybody who's listening to know that we really have looked at this[1744.01-1750.01][S10] case carefully, and we're hoping that this process will make sure that we really understand[1750.04-1752.05][S10] what's going on cases with children.[1752.08-1756.81][S10] We want to keep children with their families, but we need to make sure that they're safe.[1756.84-1761.21][S10] And so, it's a really safe balance that we strive to meet.[1761.24-1763.45][S10] And so, I think it's important that I point this out.[1763.48-1764.88][S10] So, thank you for the time, Mr. Chair.[1765.61-1766.88][S03] Thank you, Commissioner Thomas.[1766.91-1771.11][S03] And we certainly want to acknowledge and congratulate you on your recent appointment[1771.15-1772.81][S03] to the new State Behavioral Health Committee.[1773.11-1773.68][S10] Thank you.[1773.71-1774.21][S03] You bet.[1774.24-1776.58][S03] And with that, we will adjourn today's business meeting.[1776.61-1779.21][S03] We'll reconvene at 2:30 for our land use meeting.[1779.24-1779.68][S03] Thank you.[1779.71-1781.41]